Okay, we have six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. If everyone could indulge me for just a moment before we begin, we have a birthday in the house. And one of my fellow council members turned 27 today.
Exactly.
Happy birthday Suzanne.
I was hoping to just squeeze by, but thank you.
Happy birthday.
Should we sing?
Should we sing? And a one. If anyone would like to, if anyone would really like to embarrass her, go for it. I have a terrible voice.
A lot of people are already saying to me, I'm good.
This is what's called setting a boundary. I respect that. Okay, we have an update from the Community Foundation. So thank you. Appreciate both of you being here.
Hi, so I'm Anna Hendrick. So I'm the Program Director with the JP County Community Foundation. And we wanted to, you should have received a packet that outlines the 2020-2025 budget for our community municipal grant program. And so in that it outlines the request, the amount that would go out to different entities, and the timeline for the process. This is all very similar to what we've done in the past. We found that, you know, launching the grant in early January, you know, and getting all the money out the door by the spring is really good timing for a lot of our nonprofits in the community. We have a breakdown of the Grant Review Committee. So there will be a council member, BV trustees, residents from each of the municipalities, as well as representation from the Community Foundation's Board. And then it goes through just the timeline of the process. How we do the initial review, there's an onboarding and orientation for all the different, everybody serving on the Grant Review Committee. We go through initial round of scoring, follow-up site visits with our nonprofits, and then the final kind of decision-making sessions. And with the decision to be brought to council by April 1st. So that's our proposal for 2025. I can pause there before going into the recap for 2024, just in case there were any questions or if there's anything you want me to detail a little bit more.
Maybe I can highlight a couple of things.
Sure.
So before we started working with the Community Foundation, we were doing this on our own. And there wasn't a whole lot of science to it. It was sort of horse trading. And in the few years since we've turned it over to the Community Foundation, it's, the process has worked so much more smoothly. And I also feel like, you know, I did it one year. I know Suzanne, Alisa, and was there anyone else? No, okay. So a lot of us have done it. And it's a real great opportunity to do a deep dive into all the different nonprofits that work within our community. So I just put that out there. If anyone has any interest, I just, hopefully we'll plant the seed and I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah. No, that's great. I appreciate that. I also feel like when I was, you know, just thinking about what to share with all of you is just how valuable these funds are to the nonprofits. I think in our community, as somebody who's worked in nonprofits for over 15 years, a small community grants like this, you know, that are accessible to sometimes some of like the smaller nonprofits, serving a wide variety, you know, of community impact areas in our community is invaluable in a lot of ways. So I know that I meet with nonprofit leaders a lot and they are so grateful for these funds. You know, and as you can see from the 2024, I mean, we had 46 applications for funding. And I was, I kind of pulled some numbers for the last several years. And it's kind of steadily increasing, you know. In 2021, we had 32 organizations, 2022, 37, 2023, 45. So it's like, we see the same organizations coming up, but we also see this as an opportunity that supports a lot of nonprofits that are developing and getting their feet under them in the community. And as such, it's also getting competitive, you know. 11 applicants were not recommended for funding. Depends on the Grant Review Committee as to how they come to those decisions. But then 31 applicants moved forward with an average grant size. You know, like getting a little bit over $4,000. And, you know, there's kind of a widespread within there, but it's a really impactful amount for a lot of the nonprofits that are serving our communities here. And the Grant Review Committee is all volunteers, so it's all volunteer time. You know, we pull those, we have people who come back. We manage a website called Chafee Volunteers. And we've got a current opportunity right now. So if people are interested in serving on that, you know, we are always adding to our list. Because we recognize it's a really big commitment from our community members, but it really, it really brings the value of the community reviewed process. And let's see if there's anything else I wanted to highlight in that. Is there anything you wanted to add?
I have a question. It's not really about the grants. It's about the letter that you sent out asking people to give through Colorado Gives. And I would like you to talk about why you direct people to go to Colorado Gives instead of giving money directly to a nonprofit.
Oh, that's a great question. So when you go to Colorado Gives, you do give directly to a nonprofit. So Colorado Gives is just a giving platform. It's a statewide platform and Colorado Gives Day is kind of the culmination of, you know, state-based giving of really inspiring and increasing philanthropy. And then our local nonprofits create their own page. It's linked to their bank account. The funds go to them. Unless they're not able, for any number of reasons, to kind of get their own page up. They can be under the Community Foundation, but we don't even take an admin fee. We just direct the funds to them. So Chafee Gives is really an opportunity to showcase all the different nonprofits serving our community. So it kind of like takes this big statewide platform, breaks it down locally, lists all the nonprofits, but you're absolutely donating directly to nonprofits. Unless you choose, yeah.
Yeah, and I think just to add to that, what we see just in being that regional champion for the past few years is many people are giving to many organizations. And it does make it quite convenient. You can go in, choose five different organizations, and it's one checkout process. Whereas if, without that convenience, you'd be going to one page and then finding the donation link at another page, and then finding it at another page. And we all know how that goes. You get distracted and you don't finish what you started out to do. So this makes it very easy, it makes it convenient for the donors, and it directs money more quickly to those organizations that are participating. Also, we really love to engage new residents that maybe don't have their favorite cause yet. And so this is a great way for them to go on and say, oh wow, here's all these organizations. Let me choose some that I want to get connected with.
And then is there anything in it for the nonprofit? I mean, I understand being part of a big team and being part of a philanthropic effort. But does the nonprofit itself stand to maybe get some extra something because they're involved with?
I feel like you, these were like primed questions to help us.
Is she on the payroll?
These are the questions that I was asking when I was financed that nonprofit. And so I think people should know the answers to them.
Yeah, so absolutely. So there are prizes and perks through the Colorado Gives Foundation, which is based in Denver. And so every gift that you give makes that organization more eligible for matching dollars, for prizes, for, you know, gifts throughout the day. If you sign up for a reoccurring gift, the first gift that you make, or the first reoccurring gift is then matched 100%. So if you sign up to give $50 a month, that organization will get $100 the first month that you, you give. So there's, there's lots of different things. I mean, we just see locally, Chafee Gives, when we, I was looking at numbers in 2019, about $75,000 were donated to the Chafee organizations through Chafee Gives. Last year it was $375,000. So, I mean, this is definitely engaging donors and adding on the marketing and awareness budgets that small organizations sometimes don't have for themselves. Certainly, if you already have your favorite organization that you are going to give to, there's no reason to put something else in the middle of that. Go ahead and give to that organization. But if you want to go see what else is out there, if you want to support some maybe new organizations that are serving our community, or kind of get inspired by some more, go check it out and see if there's something there that maybe you want to give to in addition to your, your favorite cause.
And then I would say, finally, if you do give through Colorado Gives, you've done it timely enough that that tax credit is going to be available for 2024 taxes.
Yep.
Good job.
Any other questions? I mean, this has been an established program with us for a number of years. And it does, you know, without putting anyone on the spot, would anyone have an interest in serving in this capacity for this year?
I would do it again, unless somebody else wants to do it, but I would do it again.
I would do it because I have a lot more time than I did before. A lot more time.
So we'll thumb wrestle over it.
Well, this is the best scenario.
I did it last year. You, you're welcome.
I'll take it back.
All right.
Wonderful.
Okay. Wow, I didn't think it would go that easy. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate all that you do and bringing us up into the 21st century with our giving program. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and next up, we have the conversation on, I can never pronounce it. David didn't really, he was playing a little coy with me earlier when I said, is it devolution? Is it devolution? Is it revolution? Is it?
Well, I did Google it just a little bit ago. And it's delegation to a lower power. So it might sound humbling, but anyway.
Sounds like me.
It's a terminology.
It's throwing a dog a bone.
It's, it's the terminology that CDOT uses when, say, there's a section of highway within another jurisdiction with jurisdictional boundary. And it's actually transferring the ownership and regulations to that local agency. So I'm sure your, well, if you read your packet, it identifies 291 as still under the jurisdiction of CDOT. 291 and 50 are the two CDOT highways within Salida. So there's regulatory items that come into play anytime we're talking about those highways. It can be anything from the vehicular types of use. Access control, and access control is really affected by development. It's an application a developer or landowner would need to put into CDOT to be able to essentially gain legal access onto the highway. And so there are components there that they regulate special use permits, such as a parade that crosses a highway, or landscaping, or public art installations, those sorts of things, as well as maintenance of signals and infrastructure. I guess one other item that was discussed a number of years back, I think during COVID, was an entertainment district was talked about. And that's another component that, you know, I think Police Chief could discuss more as far as the rules there and how, you know, having a state highway made that a little bit impractical. So anyways, yeah, so the city did inquire kind of informally with CDOT a number of years back, probably six, seven years ago, about the process. And at the time, there wasn't as much support at the CDOT level due to, I think, just desiring, okay, with 291, maybe could you take the whole highway? And with multiple bridges over the Arkansas River and other components, it really didn't make fiscal sense. However, current administration at CDOT has been really great to work with. And they also indicated they'd be supportive of the process if the city wanted to pursue it. So with that, I thought I'd provide a few updates just on the section in 291 through Salida because much of it is either in the process of being reconstructed, or has been, or will be. So starting with Oak Street, this past, what, four months or so, it's been under construction. And hopefully you've been able to maybe drive it since it opened back up for the winter.
Looks great.
Yeah, it does look great. We're excited about it. And I'm seeing people using the bike lanes and sidewalks and everything else. So the first phase of that was completed, essentially almost dodged up to Highway 50. And then the next phase will start up in April and get it around the corner, almost up to B Street here, and similar type of improvements. So that, that section, we'll call it the first section in 291, will essentially be all new infrastructure here by next year. Kind of talking about the downtown core from kind of M Street to B Street. Even though there's, a lot of that's been kind of point repairs and overlays. Two of the blocks are reconstructed in 2019 when the new traffic signals went in. So that's relatively new infrastructure as well. And the traffic signals alone are close to a million dollars. So that's, it's great to know that that infrastructure is in relatively new shape. And then lastly, the western limit of 291 from Marvin Park out to Heart of the Rockies. We have grant money to pay for a large portion of the reconstruction of that. We had the FIR meeting with CDOT today on that. And so the design is moving along. And that's scheduled to be more or less a 2026 project. So with that, I think a big, big item to consider when talking about the devolution process is really what condition of assets would you be taking ownership of? Because what does that cost the city, you know, long-term? And I, I guess it's, they'll, they will generally be pretty good assets, I guess you could say. Next, I guess a couple other items to consider I had on here was just, you know, this is something we'll be talking about, I know, in future weeks. There's also seasonal closures, potentially of F Street. You know, what does the city decide to do there? How might that be impacted if we had, if the city had more regulatory control of 291? Might affect how that looks, I guess you could say, as well as outside patio expansions, things like that. So again, those are items that could be looked at differently depending on where this all goes. So next steps essentially would be getting direction from council and questions that we could take back to CDOT, understanding your level of support or not. And, and then CDOT would essentially draft an IGA that would kind of lay out the framework for what the transfer of that right-of-way looks like, as well as the fiscal implications. I noted in here, we got information from CDOT's planning manager about their maintenance costs that they have accounted for. And then they spread that out over 20 years and it was around $250,000. So I, I don't know, I imagine different regions vary on what they spend on maintenance. Kind of is what it is, but, so that would actually be money coming into the city if this process were to happen to help pay for, let's say, maybe the remaining overlay work and just crack sealing and basic stuff like that.
So question, one of the things we've been hearing for years from merchants and from residents is they hate those huge trucks going through downtown, which because it's a state highway at this point, we don't have any control over. Obviously with this, we would. And so I'm curious, beyond people being really appreciative of that, am I right in thinking that would also probably reduce maintenance costs? Not having those huge trucks 100 times a day going back and forth on the streets?
Yeah, I mean, it should, yeah. Heavy traffic is certainly hard in the roadways, so.
Yeah.
But that would come up at council? Or would that be?
So there.
So that's two, this is two different issues, right?
Currently, the city of Salida has regulations on maximum size of vehicles on city streets. And so if, let's say, 291 is a city street, that would apply, correct? Yeah.
I'm curious as to if there's any like pitfalls to this. It sounds really good. I just want to, yeah, I don't know.
I, I think the biggest pitfalls would be, one, look, understanding of the condition of the assets. I know if, if we were asked to take a bridge over the Arkansas River, like as soon as you pass by Heart of the Rockies, that, that bridge is millions of dollars to replace. I mean, that's a much more substantial thing to consider. And even when you are replacing a bridge, it's just the detouring, if you can imagine what that looks like compared to even what we just had detoured on the other end. The other item that I was a bit concerned about was the maintenance of the traffic signal. We don't have any signal techs that work for the city. And after speaking with CDOT, they actually have IGAs with other communities. I know at Drango for one, where they take care of all their signals through an IGA. And they said they would be willing to incorporate that. So they would actually be maintaining some of our infrastructure, which would be great because being a small town, it wouldn't make sense to really have, let's say, in-house electrician and certified person to maintain the signal. I think those are two that come to mind. I don't know, Chrissy D, have any other ones that jump out?
No, I think those were the biggest, you know, potential issues that could have come up. And, and like David mentioned earlier, if it weren't for the fact that we were already reconstructing major sections of 291 with CDOT money, I think that is definitely a positive for this project.
I could maybe speak on maybe one of the pitfalls that I could see potentially happening is being one of those big truckers that use that route quite often, you know, moving from the pit that I get my materials from down through that 291 corner over to the, you know, the Confluence Park, where all the building's going on on the other side of town. Just with the, with the detours that have been happening this summer, I mean, it takes, you know, it doubles my time getting those loads to where they need to go, wear and tear on vehicles that do travel those, those routes. It's just, they're going to be longer routes. You know, people, the truckers, the big trucks are talking about that come from Butala heading to Hard Rock, which is now United Companies, take those routes because it's the most direct route to those two. And that's two big companies that produce, you know, concrete. They produce our asphalt. And if you're detouring those vehicles to longer routes out the town, back in, or multiple turns, that's higher cost in fuel, that's higher cost in, and repairs on your truck, wear and tear. So that's going to drive costs, that could drive costs up of, of concrete prices, asphalt prices. Because, you know, so that's kind of where my concern is with this de-evolution. De-evolution? On my, my turn, because I mean, because I, it is a route that, I mean, it's like, I mean, this summer, I don't know, I can, I lost count of how many times I was taking that route. And then, and then once the detours came in, it was just, I mean, some of those routes that those big trucks are taking now are, there's, there's blind corners, there's hills. It's, it takes you right into more like pedestrian, you know, and bike crossings, bike paths. And so that's kind of where, one of the downfalls that I could, I can only really see about it.
I would just note that, you know, I don't think anything is set in stone in the city, the city's current truck regulations. I mean, it could be modified, I guess, to have truck routes, let's say, if that's what council so chose.
Yeah. I could also, because I live on G Street as well. So it's, I mean, that's, that's kind of one of the designated truck routes as well. So I'm kind of thinking if we do close that bigger, you know, 291 down to that, am I going to see more trucks down my street on G Street? Is that going to be the coming in on 50 and heading down to town through G? So that's, that's another, you know, concern of, of mine for sure.
How is snow removal handled on that section today? And how would it be after we took it over?
Currently, the city has an IGA with CDOT. And the city performs the snow removal and basic maintenance, like pothole repair and whatnot. So that would not look any different to the community other than the same people would be doing it, I guess I would say.
So we're not compensated by the state?
We, through the IGA, we are currently compensated by CDOT. I'm going to estimate it close to about $10,000 a year in compensation for that sort of work. It kind of varies on every year.
Sure, depending on the load.
Yeah.
Thank you.
David, the impression I got from something you said was that this is a good time to do it because of the leadership at CDOT. That the leadership at CDOT is not always as amenable to a devolution as they are right now. Did I get that right?
I would say that's correct, yeah. Conversation we had seemed like they were very supportive of it.
Particularly letting us shrink the size down that is more manageable instead of going all the way out to 291 and the two bridges that David mentioned? Because that was the offer that was on the table the last time.
Would stop at the hospital and the bridges are beyond that, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
And I mean, I recognize, you know, the, the impact that this would have on some of the trucking. And at the same time, I mean, that downtown area, it's so narrow, it's so tight, and it's this historic district. If we can figure out a way to move that heavy tra, truck traffic and figure out alternative routes that maybe aren't as good, but at least it would work. I, I mean, I think there's a lot of demand in the community.
Yeah, it's been the most consistent complaint that I've had in my tenure here is just the, the amount of trucks all night, like into, into the night. I mean, you know, because it was kind of also looked at as a bit of a shortcut through the, through a 50 route. So yeah, I mean, at, at least in this scenario, the ball would be in our court to decide truck route, to decide how big we're willing to, to allow. And it seems like up until this point, we've been doing a lot in that corridor to try to just disincentivize this, this idea of the shortcut. Our land use code would point to it as far as just, you know, future projects that we have going on right now. Point to that of, you know, a traffic circle is something that is going to slow down your Google map projected estimated time of arrival. So at least this would, this is, this is a pretty, pretty awesome because it just allows us to decide all those things. And that, and, and weigh that impact too, so that, you know, so I'm pretty supportive of that, I think.
And the maintenance on the stoplight? You said they would, could currently still maintain that through an IGA, but that would cost us something, correct?
It would. And I can get some refined numbers. I, I don't have them off the top of my head, but it was pretty minimal, is what I understood. But certainly when the IGA, or if the IGA is drafting, I'm for it. I'll make sure that's all very clear, so.
And, and even though it would cost us a little, some of that could come out of that $250,000 a year.
Correct.
Yeah, that they'd be writing us a check for.
That's really, the intent is for that to cover an estimated 20 years of basic maintenance.
And then after that, it's all on us.
Yeah.
Do we get that $250,000 for up to 20 years asset, or is, how long is that?
I think it's a one, I think, I'm pretty sure it's a one-time payment. That would just be up to the city on how they wanted to utilize it, so.
And then I have one more question for, for like the trucks that have to be rerouted. Aaron, when you're talking about that and it's taking longer to get to your jobs and such, are you passing those costs on to your customers?
Yes, yeah, I mean, the amount of, you know, yeah, the price of the load goes up for delivery. I could say it's just, it's more gas, more wear and tear on the vehicles.
Right, so you directly pass that on to the construction?
Yeah, that would have to be, you know, yeah, that'd be, definitely have to raise prices of.
Councilmember Necarado.
Okay. Councilmember Necarado, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I was just going to say, I was going to build on somebody's comment a while back, that devolution doesn't necessarily equal truck closure, right? This is just one step and then we can certainly revisit the concept of the truck closure.
Yeah, did you have some?
In, here's example, isn't that local traffic though? Versus traffic that's going through our community somewhere else? How do, how do our regulations impact that? Russ, you want to hit over that one maybe?
As far as how you would manage it, or?
How do you define the difference between local traffic that could come through town?
Something transiting our community versus something delivering in our community? Because we have to allow the trucks in at some point.
Yeah, so the way it is right now, if somebody's making a delivery to like Safeway or down to one of the restaurants, that's considered a local delivery. And if somebody's making like a jet through town to make the shortcut like you referenced, or if somebody's going to Hard Rock from over here, that would not be considered a local delivery because it's not going to one of our local businesses downtown?
An example, picking up from Brutella and then delivering to a construction site in the city limits?
That would be a local delivery.
Okay, so he wouldn't have to detour?
Yeah, if you're, if you're delivering to an actual site, that would be considered a local delivery. Like to a house or somebody that's building something.
And also it'd be like within business hours would make sense for that as well? I mean, I would refer to like when I get complaints of late-night sounds of trucks at midnight.
Yeah, a lot of the late-night trucks or your people bringing groceries into like Safeway, or some of the restaurants have overnight deliveries.
So I guess, I mean, speaking for the, you know, the Butala and the Hard Rock. So I guess, I mean, speaking for the, you know, the Butala's and the Hard Rock's trucks that drive back and forth, so I guess neither one of them are in city limits, right? They're at Butala's outside of city limits, Hard Rock is outside of city. So when they drive through there, that would be, that would, that wouldn't be a local delivery.
Yeah, it would not be considered.
So they would have to find another detour else, elsewhere, if it were to go to this.
That's correct, yep.
Getting rid of trucks in downtown.
And Chief, who enforces that? Who would enforce that?
Police Department.
Oh, they would.
Yep. We had a couple of situations this summer where we had to enforce that. It's not too common, but if the city took that over and that was the rule for the roadway, we'd be in charge of enforcing it.
Other questions?
I just want to say I appreciate your report on this. I had to read it a few times just to let it sink in, but I appreciate how thorough you were. And, yeah.
Thanks.
I don't want to speak for anyone else. I mean, my thought would be this makes sense to move forward. We're not locked into anything but to continue to explore and have conversations. But if anyone feels differently, now would be a great time to, to bring that up.
I'm a big fan.
Let's see what comes of it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not completely against it at all. You know, I agree with what everybody is saying about, you know, the other side of the, of the coin as well. Like it would be great, yeah, downtown, be great to, you know, be down there and not have that heavy traffic coming through. But just on the other side of work-wise, I'm just, I have to speak for the truck drivers and the.
That's important to bring that perspective.
It's going to come with a cost.
It's going to come with a little cost, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
And realistically, there's going to be some trucks because of deliveries to Safeway, et cetera.
Yeah. And I think Dominique maybe had something else.
Can you all hear me?
Better now.
Yeah, I just said I'm a big fan. I think it sounds like there might have been some confusion there about the, the in-town delivery. If a, if a truck from Butala or Hard Rock is going to a building site in town, then isn't that a local delivery?
Correct.
Local construction site.
Yeah. Usually the bigger trucks, they deliver between Hard Rock because some of the, some of the material at Hard Rock has to go to Butala for them to make their, to make, or Butala's materials go to Hard Rock for them to make their asphalt and concrete. And they buy it back and forth with each other to make those, make those materials for concrete and asphalt. So that's, that was, that was the big impact that I could see talking, just, you know, for the truckers in town anyway.
Gotcha. So, yeah, I think just, I'm a big fan of taking this first step, but I would love to revisit that conversation and also give the indication, I know that truckers can get organized, so give that indication that we really would like to see those, those trucks that are just driving through, you know, not driving from Hard Rock to Butala, vice versa, but just, just driving through because it's a shortcut that they need to either get a quieter truck or go around.
And I would also encourage anyone who hasn't spoken to Eric Miller. Eric's a citizen, he's here a long time. He brought this to my attention a few months ago, very knowledgeable, really intelligent person, and I think he would be very open to a conversation. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, he's spoken with Transportation Advisory Board and others. And I think he has probably more community feedback than I do even from just others that live along the corridor or whatnot, so.
Eric Miller?
Yeah, Eric Miller.
He sent an email, right?
Mm-hmm. I can get, I can get his information, anyone who needs it.
Okay.
Do you have the direction that you need?
It sounds like there's more than two. Is that right?
Yes.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll get with CDOT and start drafting something up. I don't know exactly how long it will take.
We needed yesterday.
I know, I know. Will probably be a couple of months. I mean, because they, just their IGA drafting and whatnot, I have to go through certain channels and checks and reviews and that sort of thing. So we'll be back in a bit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe our work here, what? Oh, we got, oh. Oh, yeah, we're doing good. And do, do we want to just one last birthday chant? No, I'm kidding.
Happy.
You already embarrassed her.
You could solo.
If everybody started saying that.
Solo, we can't hear you.
It was your brother.
I bet it was. Thank you, Jim.
Well, I mean, brothers have a purpose.
That's what they do.
That's right. I can actually go home and.
So you want a devolution?
I told you, thank you. I told you. See there?
No, I like when you ask questions.
I will, we thought, I'll get the other.
Yeah, but this was like a.
My Lars and your report.
Okay, cool. Just don't bother coming to my office.
Oh, I'm not bothered.
Hey, Bill, Bill, are there still My Lars for the mayor to sign in community development?